July twenty-sixth, special.
Well, we're ready, Brian.
Yep.
Oh, me and Lord Roboff.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Hines. Just to remind our user mics, because we are recording, I think I have them all on, they just need to be, if you speak. I have the agenda and then the transit ridership, I know you guys asked for that, so I thought this was a good time to put that in there for the transit ridership. And then that, the packet is there for your budget expenditures. We are a balanced budget right now. The CIP planning helped a lot with that, just able to put that in there and the equipment items in there and all of that, so. And then we'll start off, where are you going to start?
I suppose we'll start with Council.
So, I was thinking that we had talked about that this was going to be a year that we were going to try to be pretty lean. Now, I understand that our revenues are higher, but as we all know, we can't count on that sales tax. So, my first question would be, if we want to be lean, how important is it to do this replating? If we had to cut someplace? I know it's from a paperwork standpoint, it's good to do, but.
We can wait.
I'm not saying we should, but.
I thought it was just a good year, because there is the funds available to do that and clean up the properties, so we put that in there to clean up as much as we can.
Okay, so how do we have funds available when we were talking about, we've got a, we've got, we can't have any growth, we've told the departments they have to be flat, we can't put money in the CIP for parks in a couple of years?
So, as you remember, when we're going through the CIP planning, twenty-twenty-two was fine, it was future years that were.
Well, I understand that, but from a cash flow standpoint, if we don't spend it this year, it's going to be in our reserves for next year, and it could be used for some other things, so I'm a little, that is a little concerning to me that we're at a balanced budget. We're never at a balanced budget, never.
Okay, I'm just curious, I just have, sorry, moment here. So, when she's saying the replating, that's what we've been doing, like to industrial? Okay, so that costs forty grand?
For all of our properties.
Oh, wow.
Not a hundred percent sure on what it's going to cost, but there, we do have quite a few properties that do need replating.
Is that most of the survey work?
Yeah.
And it's not just that thing, I guess, I've done this long enough, well, we've never been at a balanced budget, that I recall, so that makes me a little squeamish that we are overcounting our revenues. How do you feel about that, Brian?
No, we're not, we're not overcounting revenues, the CIP has done, the biggest, the biggest impact in past budgets is all of the capital projects that were included in the budget, and usually those were cut down to get to the balance. Well, the CIP lays out all of those projects already, so we don't, we've already gone through the prioritization process, we know what's coming up in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, et cetera. So, now, if a department would come in and say, hey, I want to add a half a million dollar project to something, then we'd be a half a million short, because it's not in the CIP.
Well, we did delay some things that could be funded instead. So, we need to increase contingency by seventy thousand?
That was, that was just to get the budget or the expenditures equal to the revenues.
Okay, well, I think, I think, once we get through everything, maybe we can come up with some projects that we could spend money on in lieu of some, some other things, maybe, that are more important. So, what did we increase revenues by, in the, what did we increase sales tax by? For revenues, I don't, was it three percent?
Quite a bit over the twenty-twenty-one budget, but I took twenty-twenty actuals, and then three percent to twenty-one and three percent to twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
So, Christine, I know you've been doing some of the research on the online sales tax. Refresh my memory, did, did we actually have a line item in there on online sales tax revenues?
Because we can't really track it very well.
Well, the state's starting to.
Are they getting better?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is that something that?
We would keep a separate line item on that, because the state is keeping track of it now, and they have a monthly report on that.
Is that, is that something, though, that we could somehow incorporate into our projections? Are they doing any projection work, as well?
They, they don't share with us.
Do they just break it by county, or do they actually do it by city?
By city.
They do?
We all get sales tax revenue from the state.
Yeah.
So, they break it down city by city. I'm sure that the Department of Revenue for the state's budget does some forecasting.
What kind of revenues are we seeing, Brad? What, what kind of revenues do we see off online tax revenues?
It, it just, it just shows on, what is it, online or?
Well, they have a separate report now, that's remote sellers.
There.
It's around thirty-five to forty thousand a month.
So, could we establish some sort of a trend line?
Not yet, because they don't, they don't go back, I think they just started it, they looked, what, a year?
They just started in October.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
So, there's no way to go back and look?
See, they ended their budget year coming up. Six months from now, or eight, nine months from now, there should be some sort of a trend line that could be established, I would think. To give us a simple.
Maybe, you know, the trend line would only be about twelve months, eighteen months.
Yeah, and I realize that, but at least it gives a, gives a little bit of a picture, better than nothing.
Yeah, and they just started looking at the data, so.
And I know the request had been out there for a long time. But I think, I don't, personally, I think that would be, let's say, a year from now, if we had a year's worth of data, I think it would be very helpful, just like all the other revenues.
So, what are you saying, like, so that way, Jack, we know, like, if it's actually shopping local, or if it's online, you know, just kind of give a?
That's a good idea.
My, my theory is that, okay, we've had the, our, our sales tax local, and we do a pretty good job of buy local campaign. An idea I have is that buy local or buy online, just have it delivered. Basically, we're still getting that same sales tax revenue, just don't buy in Sioux Falls. Unless you're buying furniture, Jim, right?
But you kind of catch my drift there, I think it's, I think it would be a worthy campaign partnering with the chamber to do something like that.
I agree with you, Jack, because I, I mean, down in the future, right, that would make sense, because then we could say, you know, we increased by this percent, and even though a lot of you are buying local this way, we're also getting X amount of dollars online, and it's helping us in turn do, kind of like what you guys did a year ago, Brian and Christina, remember that, where you talk about what this money goes back to, I think it was very informational to the citizens to understand that, when you buy a brand in. I haven't seen those lately, are these still running, or no?
I don't think so.
But like, I think that's really good for people to understand, especially when we get our sales tax in, that when you guys do shop here or buy online and have it delivered to your home.
Buy online, just have it delivered here.
And I, I broached that subject with the chamber.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I think you need to be a little bit careful there. I would tell you that as a, as a retailer, we were very cautious of encouraging people to buy online. Now, part of that was our online sales internally weren't what they should have been, but as we got that up, there's a little danger there, because it's proven that if you come into a retail establishment, you'll spend more than if, than what you do online. So, I'm not sure how the businesses in, in the community would feel about that.
If you can't buy it local, buy it online, maybe, because, you know, there's some things you can't get here, as much as you want to get here, there's some things you just, you can't get here.
Right.
But yeah, you're right, the first offense would be, well, support your local business owners, because they're the ones living here and giving back to communities, or giving back to our community.
I think some of that responsibility of buying online locally is the local establishment's responsibility to sell their online sales. It's not necessarily our responsibility.
Very true.
But I think the argument was, if you're going to go to Target and buy it anyway, then buy it online.
Yeah, no, there's merit in that, yeah, I would agree with you on that. That's a, that's an interesting question, I'm, I'm not sure how the, I would, I would, I'd like to hear what the chamber has to say about that. It would be interesting. I'd like to go back to, Barb, your question on this plating. And I, as I see it, you know, over the years, two thousand eighteen, eighty-seven thousand, and then I see twenty-twenty, I'm not sure if that was based on the pandemic, but we have, we've spent, you know, more, we've spent less, it doesn't seem, I guess, to me, it doesn't seem out of line.
No, it's not out of line, but I'm coming from the standpoint that we're always trying to, to do new projects, you know, we've always had to cut the budget, as Brian said, and if the CIP, doing the CIP makes it much easier, I'm all for it, but I don't see it as a priority, so if we have to come up with money, and we have forty thousand there, and we have seventy thousand in contingency that we just plugged,
Sure.
we're already at a hundred and ten thousand, maybe we could.
Take on a project that you may.
I will, I will say that our, our project list for next year is, is packed, we really cannot take on any more projects.
The other thing with the, the plating is, right now, if people, correct me if I'm wrong, if people are doing a project, they take out a building permit on their property, and they've got a lot, and then they've got a half a lot, they have to replat their own property.
Correct.
And for, for the city to say, yeah, you have to do it, but we're not going to, we're going to wait. I, I don't know, I think that this is an ongoing project, or we can try and finish it up next year.
It's just an ongoing, as, as we move along, we've got, I should count up how many properties we actually own.
Yeah, I have like twelve different areas that we need to clean up, and it's getting ahead of it, because like the golf course with that building on there, we had to do that in order to put that building on there, so this is just really getting ahead of that, and then rezoning all of our property institutional, and getting ahead of it while we can.
Is this going to take care of all of property, or just?
I'm hoping so, I'm hoping that's enough.
Then we don't have to come back and revisit it.
Right.
So, quick question with that, so if it's a dozen properties, are we using the same firm and getting, you know, a little bit of a discount by doing a bunch all at once?
We would use the same firm and get, and have them do them all.
But instead of just doing one, one time, just say, we want all these completed by?
Right, the agreement would be for all city properties and parcels, and yeah, done by whatever.
Hopefully save a little bit of money on that, though.
Yep.
I, I would tell you that capital improvement projects, we did, you know, and again, I'm assuming Paul was very instrumental in doing this, because he was great at it when I was on the school board, they did organize you to a point where it was much more efficient in terms of the budget, so I, I applaud you for spending the time that you've spent on the CIP, and I think it's going to be a real tool that can be used to stay within a budget, but yet stretch the budget to the point where you're getting things done.
I just have one last question.
Sorry. Okay, were these, are we behind, or why do we have to, is this something that should have been done before, or why now do we have to change them? Or is this something we have to, like, do every, like, five to ten years, or?
What, the replating?
The replating, yeah.
Which is never done.
We did, okay, so it's never, it's never been done, so it basically was something that should have been done years ago.
Well, and not, I mean.
We, we created an entirely new zoning district.
Okay.
Called institutional zoning.
Yep.
We did it with the understanding that all the city properties would become institutional zones.
And we just never?
They never have been, they, they zone currently anything?
Most of them are NRC.
Which is, is not really a zone.
Okay. So. I'm just trying to figure out, like, why this?
Yeah, no, for, for instance, McCarty Park, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Well, they're done, they're done, we don't have to worry about this again unless for some reason we sell a piece of property, or, okay.
So, McCarty Park is six separate parcels.
Oh, wow.
It's just, as we acquired the park and expanded it.
Yeah.
It was six. So, we're just trying to clean that up, get everything rezoned institutional, which is a benefit to the city, because it allows a little more flexibility in what we can do versus the general business of residential district.
I'm not going to speak for Barb, but I guess what I'm hearing her say is, this is just one of those items to potentially put a question mark by, and if we get through this, and we decide, hey, we really want to do another street in the core, how do we come, how do we make that happen? How do we come up with a million dollars? Well, we can add up our question marks that we came through, that's, I guess, how I see it.
Nothing else much changed.
Wages, go talk wages.
Okay.
Just got them here, anyway.
Wages, um, wages in the past, we have done CPI, and what the CPI is, and in June, that, currently, right now, that is five point four percent. So, that's what's plugged in for council and all your staffing.
Is there a total, total, like, what, what's the budget for staffing last year, what's the budget for all of them, without going through line item by line item?
We need to adjust that, that's why, I know right now, it's, that's what CPI is, but I, I, I can't, I can't justify that.
The other thing we need to remember is the new pay scale is shorter, so every step increase is larger. So, it's a very sizable increase on top of a very sizable increase.
Yeah, so we need to know what the wages were last year versus what we've got budgeted for this year, and what that total increase is, because when I look at the wages under city administrator, that's an eight point seven one percent increase, I think you had a step in there, Brian.
Yeah, I would imagine.
So, that's part of it, but we've got to manage this carefully, we're going to have a recession at some point.
It's just what, what we've used since twenty-fourteen, that's what I use, that's what's plugged in. Just need to know if I need to, what number to use, basically is what I would need to know.
Well, there's different CPIs, which CPI are you using?
CPI, you, all workers, same one the state uses.
Do you know, have you ever had, like, what payroll?
Total payroll is three point two eight six last year. It's hard to go off twenty-twenty-one, because you guys made a large increase in March, too.
Well, this is what we're budgeting for, it's usually, it's, in the past, it's been two, three percent.
Like, this year was half a percent.
Yeah, it was on, it's been around one for the last couple of years.
Last year was point six.
Is the state going to give us some money?
So, twenty-twenty is three point, three million, it was in this next production?
Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two is three point two eight six. Budgeted this year was two point nine, however, you guys approved a substantial increase in March for different depart, departments, so. After that, I'm not sure where that should have been. Probably around three.
So, payroll's going up quarter of a million, right on the map?
But that includes some proposed new hires.
Yes.
Yes, what in, I saw one TE up here, what, which new hires have we talked about?
Well, as we go through, as we go through the departments, we'll, we'll explain changes.
So, what are we budgeting for increased insurance, health insurance?
What we've normally done is, well, actually, what we've done the last couple of years is six percent increase July first.
Yeah.
I don't always think that, no, I'm just thinking, I don't really care.
Everybody frees ours.
Yeah, we can freeze ours, I don't really, well, sorry, I can't speak to myself, sorry, gentlemen, maybe you want that money, but I think what we could pay this way.
Nobody's doing it for us.
Yeah, no one's doing it for this.
Well, speaking of health insurance, I mean, I know the trend in business, more and more and more companies are doing this, that if you work for company A, and your spouse works for company B, that if, if company B provides health insurance, that spouse has to take that health insurance first, and then can supplement with the second. Is that something that we have ever looked at? Jim, did you ever do anything with your employees, anything like that?
No, I mean, I.
It's common.
It's common.
It's, it's coming more and more, and our company had that. So, the trend has been within companies, small, large, that if you work for company A, but your spouse works for company B, and your spouse, that company, provides health insurance, that company A will require that spouse takes, takes it out at their own company, and then can be supplemented by the secondary insurance.
So, I'll tell you this, so, everyone knows my husband works for the City of Sioux Falls, they did that, I want to, I was still a stay-at-home mom, but I had to do proof that I wasn't employed by somebody else, I don't know, Dave, you probably weren't there then, but I had to show proof that I wasn't employed, and then I was okay being on his family plan. Now, since then, I obviously graduated, now I'm, I'm employed, and so I can't, you're right, like, I can't be on his plan, I, since my employer offers me, I think it's where if your employer offers you, I have to have my own separate, single plan through my employer, and then, you're right, like, as was explained to us, Jim still has a family plan, and if for some reason something really horrible happens to me, and mine doesn't pick up, there, since he has a family plan, then the cities would pick up if it, if it needs to, but I mean, we've never had that yet, thank God, but. But I see what you're saying, savings, yeah, and I know Sioux Falls did that, that's something we could look into, because I know they saved a lot, I mean, I know they have a lot more employees, but, you know what I'm saying?
We talked quite a bit about this a couple of years ago, and it would probably be significant, we couldn't do anything about it because of the grandfather plan, it prohibited doing anything like that, but we talked quite a bit about that, because we do have a lot of spouses that have coverage where they work, yeah.
So, thinking outside the box here, how, I know, I know the grandfather plan that you mentioned, Anna, but, mentioned, but it seems to me like there is a way to establish a workaround, maybe it's a supplemental insurance. I, I'm not sure how, that, um, Brian's on you, or someone else questioned, probably. But I think it's, I think we'd be prudent in at least looking, looking into it.
But still would cover the employee and their dependents?
Yes.
And their spouse, for some reason, their spouse doesn't work.
Right, it's basically second, second coverage, so if a family has two family plans, and something happens to the wife, her plan's going to pick up first.
Right.
Above the husband, their plan's going to pick up first. Not just automatically.
But what?
Goes by birth date.
You have to weigh both?
If you have two coverages, because I had it with my first wife, we both had family coverage at our employer, it went by the birth date, so whoever's, whoever's birthday was first, their plan paid first.
Meaning older or in the calendar year?
Uh, let me think, she was older, when was her, I can't remember when her birthday was.
Yeah, or does it busy go by gender, you know what I'm saying, or do they go by, like, the months?
I can't remember, I, I just know that it went by birth dates, as to which plan got covered.
My understanding, Jack, is that it's, it would be a city policy, my understanding is it doesn't have anything to do with the plan, it would be a policy that we
Right.
create, like the City of Sioux Falls creates, my husband's employer has the same.
Yep, my, my employer has the same, my wife's employer has the same.
Yep.
Those single plans are pretty insignificant, really, in cost, I mean, for a single.
And it's, it's a savings all around, I mean, for the spouse, either spouse and, and the two companies, so, I mean, it's a simple policy change like that, I, I think is, it's, it's, it's not going to hurt any employees' benefits, you know, it, matter of fact, it might even supplement or help, you know, that they have two coverages, dual coverages. Something catastrophic happens to one, you know, that second, secondary insurance, second company B insurance will actually go in and help pick up deductibles, out-of-pocket, all those types of things.
I don't think that's true in all policies.
No, that, that, that's.
You'd have to make sure before you tried to sell it that way.
True, true, but I mean, that's a Casey's on you.
He could tell you.
Type question.
I guess if you're saying spouses have to take it at the other job, we have what's called employee plus child. So, then I would assume the employee would have to take that, and then spouses are not double-covered.
Yeah, I would assume that's the way.
So, then you're not, and then even if you are taking family, you're not, I don't know where your savings are at.
Most employers will offer it at a supplemental cost if there's going to be the double coverage.
Oh, so you have one, just employee plus the child, employee plus the family?
Yeah, we've got employee, employee spouse, employee child, employee family.
Okay, that makes, okay.
Well, I think.
I know we have the family thing, so that's why I would be.
I, I think there are a lot of companies that do that, like you say, have a employee plus child, or dependent, I think they usually call it. But if you have that same situation, and company A requires spouse to have company B, that's an option, they both can have employee plus child. God forbid something happens to the child, they've got dual coverage, without having to go to a full family plan. I suspect there's a pretty decent workaround that, in, in all reality, could be a savings, not only to the employee, but to the city, and then company B, of course, so.
Do you think this savings would be enough, Jeff, where every year we have this discussion, and you just get this, get feeling in your gut, because, you know, when you already talk about, I believe I have talked about healthcare, right, like, you don't want to take, but if it's savings, and hopefully then we can just kind of, I don't know.
I'm saying saving.
A single is significant savings, a single plus children is more expensive, a family plan is the most expensive, so if you really, if you're going to sell us, the spouse would have to take the single plan only for you to make a work for them. Those are, I mean, those are pretty, they're typically relatively inexpensive.
Yeah, they are, so I, I don't know, I just think it's a prudent thing to take a real hard look at, because.
So, at this point in time, refresh, I know we met with Casey here a while back, and I probably should remember this, but I don't. Right now, do we pay what percentage of the health coverage?
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five, and is that for whatever? Ninety-five, and is that for whatever they.
Yep.
Choose to take, family plan, single plan, whatever it is. So.
So then every year, from my experience as mayor, is that every year we have these discussions, and it's just. It's not a fun one to have, but, you know, um, and so that's why I'm like, if there's a way that we could, if, if we can get the finances down, so we don't have to always worry about breaking our budget every year, I'd be open to that possibility, because we could save some money, then we just know, like, we cap it at whatever, seven hundred thousand or whatever we say. And if we can save some money, then hopefully even though rates may go up, we can still, I don't know.
You know, I, I don't know enough about the history of our, our, you know, your compensation package includes a lot of different things, its wages, its fringe benefits. If we're near the top of the compensation in terms of salaries, then you can look at those types of things. But if we're, personally, I believe there's better ways to save money than to take dollars away from our employees that we've had great longevity with. And I, I think we need to be a little bit careful here, because this is, this is a, to me, it's a part of the whole compensation that seems to me, I'm, I'm impressed with the continuity of our employees and, I don't know, I, I'm not sure that the amount of savings is going to impact this multimillion-dollar budget to the significance that that's where we should be looking.
You know, Jim, I think, I know where you're coming from, but I also think that if, with the right plan, with the right insurance company, that if that policy is in place, that they look at that and say, our risk exposure just dropped.
I, I don't disagree that there's merit in it, because we encouraged it, we didn't mandate it, there's no question, most people do. I think the, the challenge is going to be, when you're paying ninety-five percent of it right now, there's going to be, it's going to be more expensive for the employee. I, I guarantee you it's going to be, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, well, they're paying five percent right now. If you put one alone, one, one person in a family alone, it will be more than five percent of what they're paying now. I, I'm sure of that.
Well, I can, we can ask the employees. If their spouses have coverage at their place of work, plus how much that would be. We currently have twenty-one employees on family coverage, and that's thirty-seven. So, currently, family coverage is twenty-three, twenty-three sixteen a month. Employee plus chilled child is fourteen forty-two, so it's eight hundred and seventy-four dollars difference. So eight forty, eight forty-one, they're eight seventy-four times twenty-one is eighteen grand a month, roughly.
What's a single coverage, Brian?
Single coverage is seven seventy-nine, so seven eighty.
So, uh, do we have, I'm assuming somewhere online we have a few employees that are on Medicare?
They, they're not, they're not on our coverage, once, once you hit Medicare, you can't be on our health plan.
Okay. But Medicare also works in a similar manner, because there are companies that you can stay on their plan, Medicare.
Yeah.
They will force Medicare.
Yeah, I think that's our policy, once they reach Medicare or sixty-five, they can no longer be on our plan.
I, I stayed on the company coverage until I wasn't working, and then I got supplement plus Medicare. I mean, you have to sign up for Medicare at sixty-five, but you very rarely use it unless you plan to plan any.
We don't.
Same way.
Uh, I think maybe a total number of what health insurance costs or budgeted for for next year would be helpful, because it's, it's hard to tell what it is, just so we have a total number over salaries.
I, I would agree with Barb that we should find out, I would agree also that we should do some investigating as to if, if this is a policy that we wanna change, have some idea of, of what, what impact that's going to have on the employees. And I think the only way you'll know that is, is to do some canvassing.
And, and getting with the insurance company and just seeing what their, what their, what the result would be. I think we're, we're a little bit of a dim.
It's a.
Jim, a little bit, just, because I think that the reduced cost of the insurance itself will be a savings to the employee.
Yeah, we do.
And I get, I understand where you're coming from, was, well, but now they're buying coverage from two different companies. So, I, I get that, but where's the balance?
Yeah.
I don't know.
What is the projected amount with the six percent factored in? Projected amount? Yeah. Just health insurance, sorry about that? Eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, but you gotta remember there's two and a, actually three new, figuring three new and a couple of changes, so, but eight sixty-nine would be total.
For next year?
Yeah.
What was it this year? I realize you're looking at more employees in a couple of years.
You can get that first.
So I don't under, this is just my way of thinking, because I, I see what everyone's talking about here, because I feel like, but then at the same time, I feel like we have all these residents, and I value our employees, but then we've got residents, you know, like myself, and I'm paying, you know, Jim's paying, you know what I'm saying, that they pay for the health plan here, and I'm paying for my single ones as well. And so you're trying to do a fair balance, right, and be conscious of that everyone's paying taxes, and, but yet, I appreciate the employees and their healthcare benefits and stuff too, but is, so is there a way, though, like, for me, I mean, I know it's different, because I'm a teacher, but, you know, they will figure in the cost of healthcare as if it increased, like ours had a significant jump this year, and some years it doesn't really. I know one year, I think, did it go down or something you guys said? So, it, it goes like this, but then that gets fluctuated with my raises. Do we ever do that with the city, like, where if, you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if healthcare, to kind of help balance it, because like, like again, I, I don't like every year we talk about this, because I feel bad for the employees and they're in turmoil, but then you wanna be conscious. Yeah.
Your mic?
Oh, sorry. Um, and then, you know, I just wanna be conscious of everyone, but you know what I'm saying, then, so like now, when I sign my contract, I might not have gotten the raise I might have been because of healthcare cost. You know, so does that, does that play in fact where?
Makes all the sense in the world, I totally agree with you. To me, again, all of this is a single compensation package, and I think you do have to look at it as a total budget. You know, wage increases, health coverage increases, those types of things have to be looked at that way. So, again, you're, you know, I'm not sure, I'm assuming the ninety-five percent health coverage has been in play for a long time.
One year.
One year.
Yep. Before that, it was after four years, coverage was free.
Okay.
So why don't we for our next meeting have a total of health insurance, total of wages for this year and the proposed for next year? Just so we can have those gross numbers.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, because I could be wrong, but I think as an employee, and then so that five point four percent will say, well, you're only gonna get three percent because of this this year, but you can maintain your level of health insurance or, or whatever it is, I don't know. I just feel like there's always a roller coaster, right, throughout the year, right, guys, I see everyone out there, it always seems like that.
Were our rates increasing, Brian? I can't remember what Casey said.
They did this year significantly, twenty-two percent, prior to that, I'd have to go back and look, they weren't.
Seven percent.
Yeah, I think we had a seven in there, but we had a decrease, we had a couple of low, single digits.
But I thought we said too, if it doesn't go above ten percent, like, try to make it so it wasn't this every year, right?
Well.
Like, where we're not like.
As far as insurance goes, we really don't have much control over those increases. Most of that is dictated by experience in the group. Now, Casey did indicate that since we're going to the larger group or the mid-sized group, that may be a little more stable in the future, because it's a larger group. So that may stabilize a little bit, because the largest thing that has impacted us in the past is the group, our, our risk level for our employees. You know, we have some employees that, that may or may not have a health issue, that's, that's a big user of the healthcare system. So when you have a small group like us, one employee, well, look at mine, my bill was three hundred thousand bucks.
Do we have reinsurance, Brian?
Nope.
It's probably something we should look into, it, it certainly, in our company, yeah, yes, it was an, an additional premium, but I'm guaranteeing in this day and age, it saved us considerably.
Yeah, 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 so, you know, my impact for the rates this year was probably pretty significant.
What additional amount would we have to budget if we were to get rid of the three-year buy-in for new employees?
Negligible.
As I would be a big supporter of that, I think it makes us a whole lot more marketable. I've sat in on a lot of police interviews, and, you know, those officers can go somewhere else and be vested at ninety days, or whatever the city's policy is. And here, they have to come and try to fork out seventy-five percent of two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for a family plan. That's, well, seventy-five percent of the premium the first year, then fifty, then twenty-five, and then it finally is done. But that's a lot of money for a new hire that's starting out at low wages.
You know, here's the thing about that plan, it's employee retention. And we seem to have knocked employee retention out of the park, so, I don't have a problem with that. I wish I'd have thought about that when I owned Sioux Falls. I would have implemented it, I would have made people buy into it, at least I could have kept them for four years, so I wasn't constantly training. I also know that we're the only police department that has enough people. City of Sioux Falls is cutting people out of the schools because they don't have enough people on the streets. So, I, I think that program is just fine.
Okay, but they're, they're coming in and trying to pay a couple thousand dollars a month for health insurance. Some of these people are going without, because they can't, they can't afford that. I mean, could you come in on a salary of forty thousand and commit a couple thousand dollars a month in health insurance? I mean, if, if you're saying that it's vesting them or they really appreciate it, well, they would still really appreciate it, because it's still the same plan, it's still ninety-five percent paid, it's just a market selling point for us to be able to attract the best people, that you don't have to come in and pay twenty thousand dollars in health premiums your first year.
It is a long vesting period.
Yes.
Yeah, right, right now, in this year, it's seventy-five percent, year one, seventy-five percent of the cost difference between family and single coverage, so it'd be eleven hundred fifty-two, eleven fifty-three a month for that first-year employee. If you, if you choose family.
If you choose family.
Now, most of our, most of our employees that come in do not choose family. They choose employee, and hopefully, if their spouse has coverage elsewhere, at year four, then they bump it up to the family coverage.
Because they can't afford it, because it's almost fourteen thousand dollars.
So, if, Tim and Danny, you both made great points, and I understand about what you're saying about retention and training, and that, that's expensive. Very expensive amount. Jamie, how, how expensive is to retrain, or train a police officer, very, very expensive. However, um, instead of waiting, you know, the four-year to get down to ninety-five percent spread, why not immediately go to something in, in the middle? I don't know what number that is, but where, where, where would that balance be? Is it thirty percent, fifty, seventy? And, and, like I said, possibly get rid of the, the step.
I think it should be comparable to what other entities are doing and be in the twenty, thirty percent range, not seventy-five percent range.
Yeah, I, I would suspect that it would end up in that range.
You have to keep in mind also that after that three or four years, those other entities, Sioux Falls, for example, is paying twenty-five percent on into the future, this is a, this is a three-year buy-in if they choose it, and, and, and then it goes down to the ninety-five percent of that. So it's, uh, like, like he pointed out, it's, it's a retention tool. We've been, we've been attracting applications and applicants for our, our jobs with this in place. Now, if you wanna reduce it, I'm, I'm actually fine with that. But if this is a, well, let's reduce it, and then let's go to what Sioux Falls does and have everybody pay twenty-five percent, then that's a, that's a whole different discussion.
I just want us to be able to have the marketing ability to be drawing the best applicants. Yes, we get applicants, but do we miss some really good ones, because they see the price tag, they have to pay for health insurance here? I don't, I don't know, I don't think we can even answer that.
I.
They don't ask that question till during the interview.
But people know, word gets out, I mean, benefits are, are public record, salaries are public record.
I think what we've seen is our applicants, as far as the police department and others, they wanna work here. Uh, Sioux Falls, I was talking with someone over there, and I thought they were twenty officers down, and I was informed, they went through a hiring process, and they were, by my information, they were twenty officers down, and once they got through the hiring process, they hired six. But I was wrong, they were twenty-eight officers down. Uh, and they hired six, which put them up to twenty-two officers down. Out of those six, how many will make it there, uh, through their probationary period, which is eighteen, eighteen months, I don't know. They are, you know, for, for a number of reasons, they're, they're in a bad place. They're not getting the quality applicants. I think, from what I heard on this last hiring process, we managed to get quite a few very qualified people. I think we both met the, the two new people, and I'm pretty impressed with both of them, I've talked to both of them, and, and, uh, I think we did well, I think we're doing well with retention, not just with the police department, but with public works. Uh, we bring this, this insurance thing up again and again and again, and it does wear, like, Dickie pointed out, it does wear on the, on the employees, and we're gonna have to go through this again. And, uh, and I don't, I don't know if this is the time to be really hashing it out, I think we're early in on this budget, let's get the numbers first, and then we can have these discussions later.
I think, I think Barb's idea of, let's get the total compensation for next year, as far as what the budget is saying compared to last year, and at that point, if we, because of healthcare costs, we need to tweak the comp, the salary compensation part of it, we can, we can take a look at.
I, I'd like to request, seeing what that number would be, what we would need to budget, if we decided to get rid of the four-year buy-down.
Yeah, I would love if we could just say, if it was, I'll, I'll, I'll put time to say, we pay five percent, you pay five percent, and that's it, and just.
I mean, maybe that's easy.
I know, like, if, you know what I'm saying?
We'll see what it'll cost.
Yeah.
Let's see what it costs.
I think that'd be great, just kind of be that reputation where we stand out.
I, I sort of agree with Dave.
If you wanna work here.
I don't know if today's the, the day we should be talking about changing the plan, I think we need to see what the cost is and go in there.
So, um, since we have money to burn, um, I'd like to propose, not for me myself, because I'm on the park board, but for the planning and zoning and the park committee, they've been at forty dollars a meeting for a while. If we're, if everybody else is getting a raise, maybe we need to bump that to forty-five or something. We have very loyal people, they come to every meeting, they are very loyal, and as I think Tim would attest, and I'm sure Tim's not interested in making extra five bucks, but, you know, it's kind of nice to give them something, I think.
Quick question though, in the council, did you guys incorporate that by? Okay, like, again, that's just me, but if there's a way, I don't really care if there's anything for council, and I do agree with you, Barb, though, I think the park board and the planning and zoning, they do a lot, we're very minimal, so even if it means, well, I shouldn't speak for everyone, but I want to care if you took my, my five point four percent and gave it over to those.
Well, I think that the message gets sent good that way, too.
Yeah, because I would rather not.
We say, we opt out.
Yeah.
Freezers.
Yeah, give it other places, because they do a lot, planning and zoning and park board, they do a lot of.
I don't know, forty-five or fifty bucks.
I think.
I mean, it's not, it's, it's so insignificant, I don't really like that.
But if freezers, we just become up to fifteen hundred, that how would they case for increase?
Yeah.
Something, I think.
I would agree.
They're not doing it either for the money.
No, but.
It's a little simple, thank you.
So we have three elections, three things next year for elections.
So we have three elections, three things next year for elections. Who's up next year?
Me, you, that's it.
Mayor, Ward one, Ward three.
Oh, and mayor. Oh. Now, with the new census, do those get redrawn?
Yep.
Depending where the numbers come out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would anticipate that the...
Hoping that can get done before the election.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Who does it redraw?
Yeah.
Who does the redraw?
Seacog.
Oh, based on population numbers?
Yeah, they don't, they don't look at, you know, the whole crap the states are going through with where Republicans live and Democrats live. They just look at numbers in households and try to balance out. There's a formula that they have to use so that each ward is within X percent of the other ones.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
So they draw the line as close as they can. Now, we've experienced pretty significant growth out, out to the east and out to the west. You know, the core part of town hasn't really, well, yeah, the core part of town really hasn't experienced that much growth currently. But in ten years with the, with the twenty, thirty census, assuming, assuming that Justin's subdivision is full, you know, those lines are going to have to be tweaked again.
Yeah.
So, no, Seacog does it. They balance out populations based upon census tracts.
And ten years from now, any other new developments?
Yep, yep. Now, the sooner the better on that. You know, unfortunately, we're still telling people, we switched polling places ten years ago. And we're still telling people, no, you don't vote at the fire hall anymore. You vote here because you're now in Ward, Ward instead of two. So there's a, a huge learning curve when that redistricting takes place.
Page sixteen, in your budget. Talked about elections a little bit. Legal up a little bit, kind of seen an upward trend a little bit, trying to... Kind of went a little above the four-year average on that. Finance is one area that we're adding. An employee would be like an assistant finance officer or somebody in the finance.
Are we adding somebody to engineering?
Not proposed in this budget, no.
I would be in favor of that.
You would be, or not?
I think we need somebody in engineering.
Yeah.
If we're gonna spout that we're doing all this infrastructure stuff, we need somebody to help support.
And maybe, I don't know if it's engineer or construction management or somebody...
Project manager?
Project manager, yeah, something like that. I feel like...
Something to help.
I dare to say, and I haven't lived here that long, so I'm looking at Tim, the mayor, because you guys haven't lived here a long time. But I think this is probably the most that the city has probably ever done with construction projects.
The last couple of years, yes, correct. Now, the problem with hiring somebody in engineering, we don't have anything for them to do in the winter. They're, they're very busy during the summer, yes. But during the winter...
And write grants?
We don't, you're, you're not going to find somebody that does engineering that writes grants. And Seacog writes all of our grants for us for free.
So say, we don't want engineer, like, could you do like a construction management or project manager or...
It's kind of the same thing. What are they going to do during, during the winter?
Well, then let's incorporate it.
But Marla!
Let's incorporate it with this position.
So, they could, they could surely be doing...
Yeah.
They could surely be working with Tammy and helping Tammy, I mean, because that's, that's, you know, in the wintertime, it's bid season lots of times, you know?
Yep.
And they could surely be helping to...
At this point in time, I do not see a need for an additional person in engineering. It's just, I don't see it as justified. Yes, very busy during the summer. Overly busy because we've got too many projects going on.
Well, I think that, I think that we're, we're going to be in a position where we're not going to have an engineer. I just think there's too much work. So, I don't know what that solution is in the summer. Do you bring on maybe like a retired engineer to help her? There's gotta be, there's gotta be some work around here.
Out of the engineering schools, you could hire a summer intern.
We got Ryan. Yeah, everybody's had an intern.
Yeah, but as, as a, an intern-type position, as a project manager. What a great way for a young student out of, right out of, right out of engineering school to get some experience. But you also have to remember in these large construction projects, we hire somebody for construction administration. I know that, and that's, that's where I think DGR has an onsite person there every day. Stockwell's has somebody there every day, but just to help with that communication.
I have talked to Tammy and she's not interested in an intern. It takes time to train, to get on, to, it takes a lot of her time to get them trained in, to get them to understand it. She's doing a lot of that training for that intern.
No, I've had conversations with Tammy about Ryan, and she's indicated she would love to keep him on board. I mean, as I understand it, he does a lot of little things for her that frees her up to do other things. Is that a possibility to just hire, rather than an engineer, I mean, somebody that can do multiple tasks? I wish he was here to talk to her own points, but...
I've talked to her a little bit about that. I'm, I can't guarantee that Ryan's going to stay. As far as I know, he's been offered another job or will be offered another job. So if we offered him, I can't guarantee he's going to stay. And if we have to refill his position, it is going to be very hard to find somebody of his array of what he does for her to fill that position.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I just think that she is running at both ends of... I, I, I think, I think we really need to help her, and I don't know what that, what, how we do that, but...
I agree.
It sounds like the use of Ryan is something that is important to her, and maybe that's the... And I, I'm very aware of what you're saying, Brian. And I trust you that you, you know better than, than I would, that we don't need somebody. But if, if he's of that, is he an intern?
Currently.
Currently.
Summer.
He's a graduate, like, he has a geography...
Geography degree.
Geography degree.
And so, so he is valuable to her, and he's been here since April, May?
Yeah, this is the second.
He was here last year and then he was here since January.
Is he a Brandon kid?
Yes.
Yeah, he was going to go to Portland, and, and that didn't work out with the COVID thing, and so he's decided to stay. I don't know what his future plans are, but...
I mean, I agree that having an intern is a lot more work. I, I mean, we tried it at our work and, man, by the time we were done, we were, we, we didn't do it anymore. But we did hire some part-time help that was strong. And I think if Ryan is of good use, and that's something that could be extended at least during the busy period, then we should look at that.
But he's going to need full-time work. I mean, he needs, he's a young kid.
Do you think it could be at, like, I always think of Raleigh's guys like a jack-of-all-trades. Like, do you think, if, if he's been around here enough, or like you said, during the downtime, he could fill in other places? Or not? I mean, I don't know what his skill set is. I'm just saying.
It, it's always possible. You know, the last time we went out for public works help, we were looking for an electrician.
And that, yeah.
They didn't want to pave streets. They didn't want to, you know, lay pipe. They didn't want to check lift stations. I'm an electrician, so I'm just going to do electrician stuff. We don't have enough work for just an electrician.
Right.
You're gonna, well, we lost a number of candidates because they didn't want to plow stone.
Yeah, they don't...
They didn't want to pave streets. So, if you're a geography major, you want to use your degree. Or if you're an accounting major, you want to use your degree. So, we can certainly take a look at it, but as far as priorities at staffing goes, another person in the finance department is much more important than somebody in the engineering department. Okay, so, in my company, we used to go to the, in, for the crafts that we had, a diesel mechanic, working on a locomotive. We'd hire a kid out of, after his first year of diesel mechanic school, we'd hire him for the summer. If it worked out good, that we needed somebody, we put him on full-time. You can, we did that with engineering students in our engineering department with a corporate level. We did the same exact thing. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't call them interns always, but they essentially kind of worked as that. We hired one as a project manager, exactly what we're talking about here in our engineering department. And all he did that summer long was just help manage and communicate from the, from the, uh, construction administrator. He was kind of the guy who would help feed the information back and forth, communicate between our engineering staff and that construction manager. So the, you know, two higher mid-level people didn't have to talk on a daily basis. They could feed the information to, to the kid, you know? And it worked out well. After, after a year, we hired him on as a full-time project manager. That's what we did in the Parks Department with Seth. Seth was a part-timer for a number of years, and then when a full-time opening became available, Seth moved into it. He was the number-one candidate. Yep. You know, if we've got a part-timer person, whether it's, if it'd be in the PD or out at the Gulf Well, look at Andrew. Yep. Andrew started out as a part-time intern.
Is he not anymore?
Is Ryan, like, is he, so he's full-time temporary right now or is he part-time? So it would, it would just be a matter of changing him from full-time temporary to full-time permanent. I guess I would like to pursue that before we lose him. He's been here a couple of years and isn't somebody that's a big burden for training. And leave it up to him. I mean, we're kind of making assumptions that he wants to pursue his geography degree. Maybe he would be very happy getting a couple years of the city on his resume first.
Well, I mean, you can also incentivize him a little bit, too. You know, after one year, if you get, you put him on full-time now at this salary, you stay here one year, your salary will bump X percent or X dollars.
So I thought...
Two years, three years.
So would we, would we add that half position?
When we added that half position, you know, a while back, we talked about, do you need a full-time position? And you said no. So what has, I guess, I'm just curious, what's changed that we need a full position there?
Where, where are you at?
I'm at...
Finance.
Will this be a full-time, on top of the halftime that we added recently, or would we be getting rid of the halftime?
Karen stays as part-time. This would be an additional full-time.
What, what would that person do?
They would take over the accounts payable and do all of that, along with being my backup for accounts receivable, answering phone calls, helping out, backing up with utilities. Karen would move more to an office, part-time office manager role and focus on the...
Yes, I'm just curious because we pushed you pretty hard on that. Do you need more than half? And you said no. So I'm just curious, has, has the workload changed? I mean, are there more, as we get to ten thousand people, do we have more requirements? What's, what's changed?
The part-time was, three years ago, we added her on. I don't think it was that long. Twenty nineteen is when she started.
Well, maybe then... When we talked about the budget.
If this is a part-time office manager, do, I mean, if it's in your place, it's only overseeing a person or two?
I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily call her an office manager. It'd be more of a receptionist.
Receptionist.
Assistant, et cetera, answering phones, being the point of contact, very similar to what Bonnie Nelson did when she was here.
So, do you, do you have the things separated now where you have one, one person doing, or could you? One person doing accounts payable, one doing the receivables?
We can't now.
Pardon me?
We don't now, but this, this full-time position would help us se- separate those duties.
And then Christine overlooks both of them? I'd be, I'd be interested to see what that looked like.
For me, it's difficult because I'm, I'm listening to what the people that are actually working in this are asking for. And yet, I feel like we feel that we should be dictating to them what they want. Now, that's our job. I understand that. But I think they're saying they need help in, in finance, not necessarily so much in engineering. But yet, I think we're trying to add somebody in engineering.
Well, I find it's a contradiction, Mayor, because, you know, we keep talking about all this, these infrastructure projects that we've added. And to me, when we've added all of these things, then, and not adding help in the engineering department, that's what I struggle with. Now, I understand the winter work. I don't really know the workaround for that. But you can't add millions of dollars of infrastructure work and still have one person. So that's what I struggle. I don't know what their situation is like in the office. I, you know, I, I'm happy to take it for what it's worth, what they're saying. But I'm fighting for the infrastructure part of it because we keep preaching that.
I would tell you that the thing I've been most amazed about since I've been in this role is exactly what you're talking about. All of the infrastructure work that's going on, how that all gets done and kept tracked of. That, you're, you're a hundred percent right. Now, if that's a summer project and we, and it sounds like we have a good young man that has really helped in that regard. If we could keep him, I would certainly see merit in that. But you're still going to have to find something for him to do in the wintertime. You're going to have to. Now, if he, and if that isn't the person, then we're going to have to find somebody else. Maybe we can get somebody full-time, but they have to have something else that they can do.
And be willing to do it. You're right, and be willing to do it.
Be willing to do it.
We're with the, the new full-time, I know we're kind of running out of space. What would a full-time finance person go that?
We would probably move it in where Karen's at, and Karen would come out and kind of the...
We've talked about maybe reconfiguring the front desk.
We're reconfiguring.
Oh, okay.
We do have money in there to kind of do a city hall renovation.
Because Karen is like twenty hours a week, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So then just have her sit over there by for the rest of it.
What, what I would envision is the, the new full-timer moving into Karen's office.
Okay.
We revisit the, the desk, the front desk, probably lower part of it. So that, you know, people would come in and that would be their point of contact. Would be Karen sitting at the front desk.
Put an elevated desk in?
Yeah, or, or something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, maybe where, you know, as you walk straight in, we've got that little door that we don't use, or that little flip-up counter somewhere there. You know, whether it's an elevated seat or a platform. Or, yeah, we can, we can, we can re-figure that very easily.
I guess the one thing I will mention, we all know it, but it's worth pointing out. Once we add staff, that's an annual cost. That doesn't go away. It's not like a special project. An annual, you know, benefit expense. So, just so we realize that, I'm not a fan of, and I don't think we have big government, but I'm not a fan of that. So we just have to be careful about that.
Yeah, what salary range are you thinking then? Like, they don't necessarily have to have a CPA, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
So that would be the salary.
It's an hourly wage.
Maybe hourly.
Okay.
Maybe hourly.
I don't know. I think it's feasible, some of the ideas, I mean, you guys know best. I think it shows some merit, that we can reconfigure space to make it work and, and work more efficiently.
Okay, page seventeen, insurance.
Just time out for a second. Where are we at on pursuing Ryan before he takes another job? The sad thing is Tammy isn't here, but she's told me directly numerous times she would love to hire him full-time.
Okay. And she's told me as well. It just gets back to still finding something for him to do. Still finding something for them to do, and, and you don't create a job because you have this person. You don't create a job for the person. You create a job for the organization. And then you attempt to find the right person to fill the job. If we don't have two thousand eighty hours of worth of work for him, it's very difficult to create a position. Because he, he, Ryan's awesome. Do not get me wrong. Ryan is awesome. He has done wonders with GIS. He stepped up to fill some stuff as well in engineering. But you don't create a position just because he's a great guy.
I don't think that's the intent at all. I think the woman needs help. I think she's burning both ends. I think we're going to burn her out. She's working more hours, I would dare to say, than anyone else. And she needs help. I mean, I, I'm going to advocate for her as much as possible. And, and I, from what we're paying this young man, I mean, he'd be a steal. And I think if Tammy were sitting here right now and we asked her, could you keep him busy in the winter? And I think if Tammy were sitting here right now and we asked her, could you keep him busy in the winter? I think she'd say, hell yeah. Um, I don't, you know, Tammy takes on a lot of other roles that aren't really her roles. And, and he in part helps her be able to do that. So I, I guess I would like for us to, to make that.
I guess I would prefer to wait and listen to Tammy if we could. I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I, I would like to have her input before we made any kind of a recommendation. And I, I do agree with Brian. You, you don't, because you have a good person. I hate to see good people go, but you'll have to.
So if we're going to have somebody as the point person, if you will, inside the door, why is that only a part-time position? Wouldn't we want somebody there all the time?
Well, that would be curious.
Well, Doris and the full-timer would be, you know, they're right there. But Karen would kind of, while she's there, kind of take on directing people around and just be in our.
So Ryan could help with that in the winter?
So what, I know there's some things that Tammy does.
Like, like, oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at dates, sorry.
Does, um, doesn't she do some small accounting functions for you as well? No, nothing? Let's think that there was something there that. What about Ryan as a communications, uh, social media? Does he have any of those capabilities?
We, you know, we can take a look. I'll certainly, I'll certainly talk to him.
A lot of this falls on Tammy now, getting off the text messages. Am I not right there?
No, the, the text stuff falls on Tammy, falls on Christina. Donovan does some of it. Jamie and his guys do some of it. It's, it's spread out by department.
But Tammy's a warrior, answering questions on Facebook and.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, thinking that maybe Ryan could help out in those areas. And then in the wintertime, like I said, I, I think there's, um, bid, uh, bid prep work that many times is, is done. And that's, that can be long. Most of that's done by consultants. Our consulting engineers do the bid work. They prepare the bids. Tammy and Raleigh certainly review them, but as far as actually preparing the bids, if it's a smaller project, yeah, Tammy will do it. You need to remember that when this engineering position was created, it was just as a supervisory role to administer contracts. It wasn't necessarily to do engineering work.
Right.
It was to oversee the construction administration and the preparation of plans. And we had this discussion when it was implemented that we weren't going to, or it was never the intention to expand into a, a draft person and a survey crew. It was always going to be a supervisor.
And also, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but, oh, one, two things. Economic developer, I thought you said two, which I thought was going to be hired here. But that would also help with Tammy too, right? I thought you said, okay.
Yep.
And that, is that still in the books though?
Yeah, hopefully I'll have the job description ready for you. I wasn't real happy with the last three or four drafts.
And then we're supposed to hopefully, or, but just so I'm not going crazy, we were hoping to have someone hired in July and approved, right? Okay. Okay.
I was trying to think in my head like. I would just argue that I could also see the development director creating more work for Tammy, not necessarily taking.
I don't see that at all.
Off of her.
I do not see that.
If you've got an experienced one, right, or no?
How would, how would a development director create more work for Tammy?
Create more business?
Well.
And being trained and shadowing, learning everything that, I mean, I don't think you're going to find somebody. Maybe you have somebody earmarked already, I don't know. But I, I imagine there's going to be a big learning curve for somebody to just come in and wear an economic developer hat for the city of Brandon.
Tammy doesn't do anything with economic development.
Well, if you put her in planning and zoning, there'll be a learning curve there.
Yeah. It only depends on who you hire. If you hire somebody with emphasis in planning and zoning, there's going to be a learning curve in economic development we could rely on, um.
Sioux Metro.
Sioux Metro to do that. If we hire somebody with economic development experience, they can rely on me to do planning and zoning because I've done it for 30 years. So development director's not going to create additional work for Tammy. I just don't see it.
Hopefully additional revenue for the city though, right?
I.
Maybe?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to just disagree with you guys on this one, so let's just move on.
Okay, page 17, insurance. To do a little uptake on that, we are seeing that increasing as, um, projects and are increasing when we're adding on, um, the water tower and other things that we'll be adding on. Um, audit. Page 17, top.
Top? I'm sure, okay.
Uh, audit, um, that's just the cost of our audit and it'll be a federal audit again. Government buildings. If we get federal money over 750,000, you have to do a federal audit.
There's just more requirements.
It's just more requirements for them and me. Um, general government buildings, our usual kind of repairs and city halls there. And then the kind of a city hall renovation, if we're going to stay in that building, then if we're hiring on additional staff, we got to do something in that office just to make it more usable.
Which office?
Clean it up, save.
Are we getting this, the museum stuff out?
Yes, most of it is out. They are getting another storage unit, so the rest of it should be out here by the end of summer.
And, and we can use that for something?
Storage, um.
Parking.
Parking vehicles in the winter can be nice, but there's not much, like, you can, office space would be tough.
Well, then, I guess if we weren't going to make office space out of it, why do we make a move it? I thought that's what we were going to do.
Garage.
It's a garage.
To park our vehicles inside.
And we, actually, we got storage in that meeting room that we'd like to get out of there into that garage so we can actually utilize the meeting room and it looks nicer when we have people come.
Are there any more specifics for what we're doing between city hall renovation and repairs? That's 175,000. I mean, can you give us better insight, what's going to go towards?
Repairs, the only one I have on the docket right now is painting, um, city hall.
That would be a lot greater.
No, it's not. It's a number we kind of put in there the last few years because things come up. It doesn't need to be, I, I don't care if it comes down. City hall renovations, I really don't have an idea. I do know that police department, when they did theirs, was around 30, 20 or 30, and ours is substantially bigger, so I kind of tripled it.
So I know we looked at city administration building, police, um, building. Do, does anyone remember approximate score for each of those two?
30,000.
There's 35, 36,000 total. That included some additional space. That included indoor parking.
So roughly 36,000.
That can probably be cut down because included in there was a community room plus the council chambers. And some other stuff that probably.
36, I'm going to, I'm going to ballpark it's 36,000. Okay.
Also at one time, I know this was brought up before with Lumberk, um, even to be able to create this, I mean, is it a possibility to go with the school district? He offered their chambers so, to do our council meetings? So then we could even turn this into more space for the city if we needed to?
I would rather not have that. It, it, it's hauling stuff over here. We have three, we have planning and zoning. We have council. We have, um, park board that meet all the time. I mean, we have two to three meetings in here. Sometimes a week. It's just not ideal to haul stuff up there.
We wouldn't need to move up there. If we were going to install offices, we would just build offices here along this wall.
Or knock out that wall?
See, well, I don't know if I'd want to knock the wall out. But we could just build, we'd just build offices or cubicles.
Here. Otherwise, like you said, the economic developer would just go and.
Yeah.
Right? Because Dennis would be gone then, right, when we hire someone?
Yep.
So then they would have that office.
We're still trying to work out the development director and planning and zoning offices. You know, do they stay in the same spot? Do they move to a different location?
Oh, like over by like the chamber or something?
No, no, no. It'd be between these two buildings.
Oh, okay. I feel world. I'll win the lottery and we'll do a huge new city hall with PD. I need to buy a ticket. I need to buy a ticket. But that's what it was. I think, what was it, Mayor, I don't know if you know that, but we, they did do a rough sketch. It's like eight or nine million.
Eight to nine million.
Ideally do what we probably would look really awesome to have.
You know, another thing we could use this for, quite a few months, we brought forward to ISG to do something here to kind of reconfigure this. You know, we did bring that forward for, to look at. Maybe build onto the north because we have that up there and just kind of what we can do with these buildings to reconfigure it. You know, that's another thing, we can use that 85,400.
You mean the land by the PD?
Yeah, north of the PD.
And we can bring that back and, and try to get something more functional in these buildings if we're going to be here and keep them.
I just don't know if they're worth building onto is the question.
Well, and that was part of what, um, the ISG was going to do. They were going to be, is it worth to keep them or was it worth, or you just rebuild here, a smaller facility here? Obviously, you're not going to beg, build the big one up there, but you can build a small facility here. And that was part of what they were going to provide us with, the cost to remodel and the cost, cost to build new. And it was probably going to be cheaper to build new, but that was going to be part of their.
But they were also going to evaluate the buildings for.
Yes.
Building code, structural, et cetera.
We already did the space study.
We did the space needs study.
So.
Based on 20 years, what ISG was going to look at was if we were to stay in this location and not build new, what could we do with these two buildings? A, are they, is it feasible to save them? I mean, are they worth saving structurally? B, what could we do to, if it's add-on, north of the PD, and convert this into something else? Could we connect the two buildings together with a drive-through north instead of the alleyway in between? So that's what ISG was going to look at.
Did we ever look at leasing? Remember for the Sioux Falls PD leases their buildings now? Do we ever look at leasing if, you know, a company comes in and builds it?
We certainly could. It's just.
Was that just way too, I mean, I don't know how financially, I know we're pretty strapped. I'm just trying to think of ways, because I don't see us having any time soon to have a significant amount of money to put into city hall or PD.
And, and that's just it. It's a cash flow issue. So if we leased versus borrowing our own money at 2.5% to 3%, I'd almost think the building and borrowing the money would probably be cheaper than leasing because the developer's going to want to return on investment of.
True.
Probably more than 3%.
Yeah, true.
Uh, page 18 would be the engineer. Kind of talked a little bit about that. Otherwise, no major changes.
Does she always just put 15,000 in there for testing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's for development.
It's for development.
Oh, it looks like we don't usually, we haven't used any this year, huh?
No, when a developer puts in infrastructure, we, we prefer to test it, the compaction.
Yeah. She has done one and I think she's doing quite a, some more come up, come up and coming.
Yep.
Well, if we're not going to add a person there, then I think we need to rejigger Tammy's job description. And if she is taking on more than she needs to take on, we need to pull some off. Somehow get that more in alignment with, you know, I, she may take on more than she needs to and I really appreciate that, but, um, I, I think we need to be fair to her there too. I still am a proponent of getting her some more help, but, um, if I'm outvoted on that, I am.
Can I just like table that discussion until she can be here?
One, one quick comment there. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but when she was hired, wasn't she, uh, I'm not sure the right word, required or encouraged or something in between to pursue her PE?
Mm-hmm. She's still working on it.
She's still working on it. And once she gets that, what was the incentive?
It'd be a raise.
Did we help pay for her schooling for that?
I, I can't remember if she submitted a bill, but I've certainly told her any books, training classes that she wants will certainly sit down with her and either cost share or pay for.
Any idea how close she is to getting that? I, I think at the end, it's meritorious, but.
Yeah, it's, I'd have to ask when the next testing schedule is.
I don't think it was any real significance, Jack, if I remember right. There isn't anything or much of anything in her role that she can't do with what she has now. So it would be more of a notch on her belt type of thing?
No, but she could potentially be able to stamp plans. And that's a.
And he is a city, don't need to.
We as a city don't have to.
Ah.
And we revised her job description and, and actually took that out.
And we're encouraging her to continue to pursue her PE.
And I know Barb isn't sitting.
There's nothing in her job description she needs to.
I'm sorry, Christina. I know Barb isn't sitting here right now and I, I, I don't want to give the impression I'm not in favor of more help for her because I appreciate what she does a great deal. And I think she does a, a great job. So I don't want to make it sound like I'm not in favor, but I don't want to make any kind of commitment till after we've talked to her and given her input. So I don't think, Barb, you're outvoted. I think the, I'm talking about help for Tammy. I, I just feel very strongly that we need to hear from her. Where does, I think she is very stressed in all of, not personally stressed, but stressed, stretched maybe is a better word. And I definitely am in favor of help if it's, if that's what she feels. But I'd like to know where she needs the help, what type of help she might need, then we can consider.
Is she in the office this week? Is that why she's not here?
Yeah, she's on RIC-Right.
So.
Can you imagine how hot it is on RIC-Right?
But it'd be nice to have her here so she could speak up.
Well, we have more meetings.
Yeah, we have.
So Brian, good.
How long are we going tonight, Brian?
As long as you want. Usually, we, usually we try to get to an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, that's, I, I had, I wasn't sure. I was thinking it was an hour and a half.
Yeah.
If we were going to longer than that, I need to make a quick call. Yeah, I need to get rolling too myself.
But, um, could you talk to her, um, and then, I don't know, maybe.
This is a good place to stop. We're almost an hour and a half. We'll start with engineering.
Talk to her and have her come prepared to talk to us about winter hours for somebody?
Yeah, definitely.
And is, and is, is that appropriate, just in open discussion?
Yeah.
I, I think it would be very helpful to hear, to get specifics from her.
I didn't mean to ruin, quit the meeting or anything, but.
No, it is something a plus.
I think.
I would love to thank you.
Oh, okay.
No, I think it's a very, very good meeting.
Yeah, I think it's great. I.
Well done.
Appreciate everyone's input.
And I like the fact that we went through that CIP. Oh my gosh.
I know, it's going to help a lot.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to adjourn?
Yep. Motion to adjourn.
Second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Do we keep these here or what do we?
You can take them home if you want to.
Because I'm really going to look. Thanks, Brian. In case I can't, in case I can't sleep tonight, I can just be like, oh my Christina, I could not do your job. This is a lot.
Hey, you can walk, you can walk in the house with this, you kind of wave it at Jim.
Yeah, he's doing his own thing. He's probably like, ah, don't show me any numbers. I think they start.